The meeting will come to order. We have one returning board member, Steve Jenkins, and two new board members, Matthew Benormer and Jacquetne Rikuya, who were elected at the annual meeting held on May 21st, 2019. Okay, so Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Benormer, and Mrs. Rikuya, could you stand and take the oath? Yep, we say it all together.
I, Jacquetne Rikuya Dooshall, swear that I will work the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
Okay, so would you see the round signature? Yep. Okay. No, you can use that, that's fine. Just fine in here. Okay, so I could do the left? Yep, yep. I'm just... Okay, welcome Steve, Matthew, and Jackie to your senior terms of office. I would now ask for nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year.
Let's nominate Diane.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor of Diane Lyons as President of the Board? Okay. And congratulations Diane, and now I turn the meeting over to you.
Yes, that's...
Can you do that?
Okay.
So, can we call for nomination for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Steve Jenkins.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations Steve.
We're all done with the oath, oath book now?
Yeah, I will get...
You'll get them?
I'll get them, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't want to hold you out.
No?
Oh, so we don't have to present?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, I have, you have the right, all right.
All right. Um, I have a nomination for Executive Committee Member for the 1920 school year, the Dutchess County School Board Association. I think that's, it's Wendy National nomination.
Mark has agreed to do it if someone wants to nominate him.
I'd like to nominate Mark Flashow.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Can I have a motion to appoint Whitney Drucker as Clerk of the Board for the 1920 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that motion passes. Can I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale as School District Treasurer for the 19- 2019-2020 school year with the appointment of Elizabeth Van Kuren as Deputy School Treasurer, District Treasurer for the 2019-2020 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? That motion passes.
So we're not going to do that. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna table Central Treasurer and Claims Auditor at this, at this time. You probably should have the motion in a second.
Okay, do I have a motion? Um, sorry, did you need it?
Yeah.
I have a motion, um, to appoint one as the named Central Treasurer for the extra class and activity fund for the 2019-2020 school year, a stipend of $2,638.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion to table that?
Motion to table.
Table it table next.
Second to table?
Oh, second.
Okay, that motion's tabled. Uh, can I have a motion to appoint Susan McCormick as School Tax Collector for the 2019-2020 school year at no additional stipend?
Motion to table?
No.
Not to all of them?
Not that.
We want to report, huh? We're here for addition.
Send Sheldon at tax message.
So, do we have a motion?
So, we got a motion?
Okay.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? That motion passes. Can I have a motion to appoint, to be decided as Claims Auditor at the rate of to be decided per hour or minima of to be decided per day for the 2019-2020 school year?
Table.
Okay, three.
Can we table it? Yes.
Second.
Okay, that motion's tabled.
Gets easier from you.
You say that, but that's all.
Just keep, just keep going.
All right, motion to appoint Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for Sports Services as District Purchasing Agent, Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools as District as Deputy Purchas- Purchasing Agent for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Marvin Krebs as the Title VII, Title IX Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Emily Davison Director of Special Services as additional Title VII, Title IX Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as needs basis for the 2019-2020 school year with compensation for related investigations at her rate, rate, at her hourly rate.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Emily Davison Director of Special Services as Section 504 ADA Coordinator for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools as Designated Education Official for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to designate Emily Davison Director of Special Services to attend...
I did?
I did?
Eleven.
Oh, yep. Motion to appoint Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools as Age Coordinator for the 2019-2020 school year at no extra stipend.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to designate Emily Davison Director of Special Services to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDEA with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the Superintendent of Schools or practical and notification to the Board President or Vice President in his or her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following additional appointments. Motion to appoint Teresa Castakis the BMS RMS School Nurse and Mary Skeen the CLS School Nurse as Attendant Supervisors for the 2019 school year at no additional salary as included in the duties of School Nurse. Motion to appoint the workplace at Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital to provide school physician services and Dr. Rajiv Narula as Chief Medical Officer at the cost of $8,544 for the 2019-2020 school year. Motion to appoint Sheldon Teeter Director of Facilities as Asbestos Designee Chemical Hygiene Officer pursuant to OSHA and School Pesticide Representative for the School District for 2019-2020 school year. And motion to appoint Whitney Drucker Secretary to the Superintendent as Records Access Officer, Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for Sports Services as Records Management Officer, and Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools as Records Appeals Officer for the 2019-2020 school year at no additional salary. And motion upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to designate Building Principal Edwin Davenport, John Chemnitzer, and Brett King as 2019-2020 Dignity Act Coordinators for their respective schools as required by the Dignity for All Students Act law and by Section 9 of Board of Education Policy 5300 Code of Conduct to lead and coordinate the efforts of each school's Dignity for All Students Act team in proactively addressing and responding to any and all incidents of bullying, discrimination, hazing, and harassment as identified in this state law and board policy.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to direct Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for Sports Services to make payments of A. monies for investments, B. interest on bonds as it becomes due, C. payments to redeem bonds as they become due, D. checks to cover payrolls and agency account deposits, E. utility bills, F. expenses payments, expense, payments to employees, and payments under contractual agreements.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following designations. Motion to designate the M&amp;T Bank NYLAF and BNY Mellon as official depositories for funds of, for the School District for the 2019-2020 school year. Other financial institutions will be brought to the Board in the course of the year for approval of investment services if necessary. And motion to designate the Poughkeepsie Journal as the official district newspaper with the Daily Freeman designated as the alternate official newspaper for the district for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following authorizations. Motion to authorize Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for the Sports Services and Christine Natale District Treasurer to have access to the safe deposit box maintained by the School District at the M&amp;T Bank for the 2019-2020 school year. Motion to authorize petty cash funds at the following locations in the following amounts for the 2019-2020 school year. Business Office, $100, Secretary to the Business Administration Administrator, Tax Collecting Collection Office, $100, Tax Collector, Chancellor Elementary School, $100, Elementary Principal, Buckley Middle School, $100, Middle School Principal, Rhinebeck High School, $100, High School Principal, Interscholastic, $50, Athletic Director, CLS Kitchen, $10, District Treasurer, BMS Kitchen, $60, District Treasurer, RHS Kitchen, $100, District Treasurer. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools to approve transfers and budget codes up to $20,000 per transfer for the 2019-2020 school year. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools and/or Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for Sports Services as the Payroll Certification Officers for the 2019-2020 school year. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools to approve or disapprove all conference requests for the 2019-2020 school year. Motion to authorize Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools to apply for grants and aid for the School District. State, federal, foundation, and private sources for the 2019-2020 school year.
Should be G, this next one.
Oh, G.
Yep.
Motion, yes, should be G, not F on here. Motion to delegate the Board of Education's authority pursuant to Commissioner's Regulation 100.2 to Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools to have full and final authority to make determinations regarding school residency.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion to re-adopt all previous board policies and the Code of Ethics.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve that the meetings of the Rhinebeck Central, the Rhinebeck Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District be held on the dates indicated on the schedule submitted at seven, submitted at 7:00 PM in the high school, middle school library for the 2019-2020 school year or in an alternate location and/or times as noted on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to adopt the per mile reimbursement rate set by the Internal Revenue Service, which currently is 58 cents for approval, for approved use of personal vehicles on school business subject to change of the internal revenue reimbursement rates.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, the Rhinebeck Central School District will waive the fingerprinting fee of $100.25 for all new employees who are hired to work less than 20 hours per week or receive a salary of $30,000 or less except for per diem substitutes. The District will reimburse per diem substitutes for this expense after the completion of 10 days of work and the submission of proof of payment documentation. The District will pay this fee in advance for all others as outlined above.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And motion to accept the list of New York State Certified Impartial Hearing Officers for Dutchess County for the 2019-2020 school year as updated by the New York State Education Department in accordance with Section 200.31 of the Commissioner's Regulation for the purpose of conducting special education impartial hearings with compensation of such impartial hearing officers in accordance with board policy.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion to appoint Shaw Pearlson May and Lambert L.L.P. Attorneys at Law as School Attorneys for the 2019-2020 school year at a retainer fee of $36,000 and such attorney, such attorney as assigned as investor investigator for the Title VII, Title IX, and other matters for the 2019-2020 school year if and as needed.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded. Example Deputy Treasurer, Central Treasurer, Activity Fund, Claims Auditor, Deputy Claims Auditor, Purchasing Agent in the amount of $100,000 per employee per occurrence or $1, 000,000 per occurrence for the Tax Collector and $1,000,000 per occurrence for the Treasurer for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for Sports Services as trustee and Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools as alternate trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess County Workers' Compensation Cooperative effective July 1st, 2019, to serve in such capacity until appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Purnell Assistant Superintendent for Sports Services as trustee and Joseph L. Fallon Superintendent of Schools as alternate trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium effective July 1st, 2019, to serve as such capacity until appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes. We'll close...
Okay, well, let's not close it yet.
No.
Let's swing back to the first page and have the Board approve the leadership positions and committee assignments, and we'll have this in front of you.
So, can I have a motion to approve the following leadership assignments and committee appointments as...
So presented.
As presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? Thank you all. That motion passes.
All right, so we, we did this a little bit out of, out of order, so, but you can close the, the organization meeting.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the organization meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
So let's, let's hop up to the first item on the blue page, it says public hearing and proposed changes to the District Code of Conduct.
Is it going to open the meeting or just...
No, it's a hearing, so we're here, we're here. So I, it's, it's part of the requirement of the process that for any changes to be made to the District Code of Conduct, a couple of things have to happen. Number one, the District has to convene a stakeholder committee, an ad hoc stakeholder committee, to review and discuss potential changes to the, to the Code of Conduct, which is one of your board policies. And the second requirement is to provide the opportunity for a public hearing for anybody who may want to address an item in the Code of Conduct. So you received both digitally, and I believe at your place this evening, a copy of the Code of Conduct with, with some highlighting there as I explained to you in, in the email to you several days ago. The, the highlighting in yellow is just, there are no changes there, it's just bringing that to your attention. The blue items, some of them are strike-throughs, some of them are additions, are things that, that I'm recommending to you to change in the board, in the Code of Conduct. To be honest with you, there's, there's not, there's not a lot here. As I mentioned in my memo to you, two things came up in the Code of Conduct meeting. One was a suggestion that the committee consider, consider changing the, consider changing the, it might be page seven. Yes, page...
All members of the school community?
No, uh, no, actually it's not page seven.
13?
Hang on, it's a long document. It was a section of the, yes, it's on page 11. It was a section of the Code of Conduct which addresses cellphone slash smartphone use. And in particular, a suggestion was made that for high school students, because middle school and elementary school students are not allowed to use cellphones in the buildings unless in the case of a classroom, if a teacher gives them permission to do so for an academic purpose, they can or they may. In the high school, the current Code of Conduct section allows high school students to use cellphones in study halls and during a scheduled lunch period in the high school cafeteria. A suggestion was made that the code be modified to require students in study halls or the cafeteria to, actually more so the study halls, to have an academic purpose for doing so. The, the consent, there was no consensus amongst the members of the various stakeholders. The various stakeholders included teachers, administrators, and two high school students. And, and parents, actually, from all three buildings, I think. So lacking any kind of consensus to make a change that falls upon me to make a recommendation to change or not to change, my recommendation is to leave it the way it is. But I'm, I highlighted it for you just so you knew what the discussion was about. The second thing, and most of the rest of the yellow highlighting addresses that, is that there was a concern that the Code of Conduct was not clear regarding adults, in particular members of the staff, to essentially follow most of the rules that are in the Code of Conduct. So, and it certainly, the reason I highlighted the rest of this is to point out to you as a board that there is a lot of verbiage in this Code of Conduct that addresses the idea that much of this applies to, to adults, and not just adult members of the staff, but adult visitors to, to the buildings. So again, I'm not, I'm not recommending any changes to the language that's there except where there's blue, blue highlighting, just for emphasis, to emphasize in some areas that maybe it was not crystal clear that those rules also applied to adults, and again, not just staff, but visitors as well, any adults, not just students. I've, I've put them in blue, and those are the recommendations I'm making to the Board when we get to this on the agenda in a little while, to make those suggestions. Also, a question came up at our last board meeting, I believe, and this is specifically referencing page 11, about recording events. And the question was brought up, well, does that mean that if, if people can't record events, that they can't record an event that were a portion of the school play, or they can't take a picture of their kids on stage at the school play, for example, or graduation? And what I, how I responded to the board member that made that, that raised that question last time is that this applies to school activities except for public events. If it's a public event and anybody could go there, for example, graduation, I mean in theory, anybody could go there, or a soccer game out on the field, any adult could attend that, then that is not, recording, whether it's sound recording or using a cellphone or whatever, is not prohibited if it's a public event. And I, I think in your packet or one of my emails to you, I made the distinction between an event that happens in the evening, that's open to the public, is a public event. An assembly that happens during the school day is not a public event. We don't typically allow members of the public to come into the building during the school day and participate in, you know, in an assembly or something like that. I mean, we could waive that in a particular instance, but normally, we don't allow adults, whether they're parents or somebody just walking in off the street, to come in and sit down in the auditorium during a student assembly. So it's not a public event, they would be prohibited from, from taking, recording any, anything that happened there. A good example might be, a couple of, a couple of weeks, six weeks or so ago, the Student Council invited our Representative Antonio Nogado to speak to an assembly. That was not open to the public. And in fact, it was specifically, we had a number of requests from adults to say, oh, can I come, can I come? And the answer was, no, this is for our students, for their purpose in asking questions and interacting with our representatives. So, no thank you, but it's not. So, in that, in that instance, no recording would, would have been allowed. So I just, just wanted to clarify that. Most of the rest of the blue, the blue clarifications are either strike-throughs or emphasizing, again, the idea that this isn't just for students, it's for all members of the school community, students, adults, visitors. So that, that is really the sum and substance of the changes that I am recommending be made, that the committee is recommending be made, with the exception of the, the suggestion about banning cellphones unless they're, they're a, have a specific educational purpose in a study hall, not in a cla- in a classroom. Definitely that has to be used for, for a, an academic purpose. So, and that's, that is the sum and substance of the changes that are in here. I know it's a, it's a dense document, probably better than three quarters of the pages here have no changes to be made, but we're required to go through this process whenever there is any change that we might be considering or that I'm recommending to you. So, is there anybody in the public who'd like to, this is a public hearing after all? Okay, so if it's, if it's the pleasure of the Board and the Board President, we can close this hearing now. We've done our due diligence in terms of offering an opportunity to address the issue. We'll be voting on it a little later on in the regular meeting agenda if Board members have comments. At that time, that's certainly appropriate, but I think in terms of meeting required for public hearing, we're, we've done that, but go ahead if there are any.
I was just going to ask for clarification on kind of the semi-public events where Principal of Engineering invites parents or organization members in, what's the rules around recording there? Is there an exception that has to be followed, or is it allowed or not allowed?
Yeah, that, that's a good question, because those typically are not public events, not the guy down at, Brett Wohlman can't decide to walk down there and, and walk around even if he or she knew what was going on. So that would be a good example of something that's happening during the school day, but the building principal would, would give permission for that to happen. Typically, he's there when those photographs are being taken, so he would have an opportunity to say, oh, no, no, you can't. Obviously, we allow that to happen for all, for all the best reasons. So that's, yeah, technically, it's not a public event, we'd have to give permission, but it's not something we would withhold.
No, I mean, it says also that prior teacher or administrators, the teacher could then say, you know, or more likely, they'd have to say, don't take pictures of the rooms for some reason they didn't follow.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So you want to close the hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, and then...
Swing back to this.
Swing back. Oh, this one right there. Yeah, right one in front of me.
Yeah, so we, we, two-point, oh, poll meeting to order.
Okay, so call the order, the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, July 2nd. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25th regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, are there any comments?
I'll abstain.
But first, are there any, are there any comments or questions about the changes? But first, are there any, are there any comments or questions about the changes? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Abstain?
Reposed.
Or opposed? Abstain. So you weren't here, so you abstained.
I wasn't abstained, yeah.
So two abstain. Sorry, we'll get it down. Opportunity for public comment. Seeing none. Okay, reports and discussions. So first, we have a report from Steve Jensen, our Director of Technology for Technology Integration.
Before Steve starts, just wanted to mention that back in, in mid-May, I provided the board with a copy of Steve's report, and then I forgot to ask the board if they wanted Steve to come and present to a meeting. So of course, after the fact, there was some interest in having that happen, so that's why Steve's here in early July instead of early June. Steve, I'll hand that over to you. This is a copy of what you already received back a couple months ago.
Yes, essentially, the purpose of this report is to give a brief recap, or my presentation would be recap of this report, and if you have any questions concerning it, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to run through it, I'm going to skip major portions and focus on certain portions, because as you know, we've already had this, so if you have any questions, we can address those going forward. The first thing I wanted to do was give a historical background to what we had done and how that began, and sort of talk about that in the first portion of this report, and really what some of the goals were and how we tried to achieve those things and begin to work on many of those. At the beginning, I will just highlight that the goal number five, which was network infrastructure and communication systems, was one of our goals. When I first came here, it was a priority, because our infrastructure was in poor shape at the time. There's deferred maintenance on equipment, and there was, we had Wi-Fi in limited areas. Trust, as Joe has described it, was very low with technology at that time, so we really had to begin to work and building the foundation before moving forward. So then we had, so if you go down to the second paragraph there under background, we had the, the technology plan was developed with these goals, and you'll see 12 items there that we began. Couple of highlights of that, those areas would be that we, we did install a Wi-Fi system which across the entire district, in all classrooms, hallways, gymnasiums, and all areas of the buildings. So the, we also offered Office 365, which was a software program that gave Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, that whole suite of software tools to each and every teacher and to each and every student across the district. So we began to just infuse tools and software to the individuals, staff, students, and teachers. And we also began to implement Google Apps for Education. That was an important aspect for me, because one of the things we had was we'd had Google Apps for Education here for quite a number of years, but it was using students' private accounts, and we had no oversight over those things. And so we needed to get that under an umbrella with some oversight and some management. So we became a Google Apps for Education district. And the other thing that we were able to do under that, and with Office 365, particularly with Office 365, was we were able to give every student, 6 through 12, an email address that they could use with interactions with teachers and things like that, because we did not want teachers interacting with private accounts. And having it that way, we wanted to be under a district umbrella, so to speak. So there are many things in that section that talk about the various things that we had to do to, again, build foundation. We actually started to step into a learning management system canvas, and I'll be talking about that a little bit later. Now, if you go down towards the bottom of the page, you have professional development for staff. We did provide mobile technology. We provided laptops to some of the staff. We have not provided laptops for the high school staff, however, that's an area that we have not been able to address at this point due to some fiscal limitations. But initially, when we rolled this out, we gave each teacher their own laptops. And at the elementary, we were in a situation where we needed to replace all the teacher machines. We had XP was our operating system, and it was outdated, and it caused severe vulnerabilities for our, for our students and our staff and our infrastructure. So we gave each teacher, we had to replace those, those machines, so they ended up with a mobile device that they used. The middle school got somewhat the best of both worlds. They still had a machine that was robust enough to be used, but they also got a laptop. And what we're hoping to do at the high school here in the near future is to provide mobile technology to the high school as well. They themselves had deferred getting laptops in lieu of trying to get, and I thought was highly commendable, that staff to forego their laptops so that the students could have laptops, when it became a matter of priority. So, so there's been some delay in that, and, you know, for, for some good reasons, and quite frankly, a commendable thing for the high school staff to do at that time. So we began, again, mobile technology for the staff. We also did something, and I know I've explained this the last time I was here, was we've made a commitment to dedicate one, one superintendent's conference day a year to technology. Not many districts do that. And one year, I think we did a half a day, because there were some other priorities. And that may happen in the future, too, but for the most part, for the last four or five years, we've had that end date just to technology. And that has transitioned, I think I spoke to you about this, that has transitioned from presenters coming in and presenting to the staff beginning to teach one another and sharing best practices and sharing what they know and their, their level of expertise. And that all goes to integration. Now we have our staff teaching in a turnkey fashion to other staff. And we've run that course, and it's getting, quite frankly, we're running out of runway, so to speak, because there's only so much expertise that people can share over so many years. And so, but, but their staff has, the staff has increased their skills, they're beginning to share them. And one of the things that they mentioned in the CDEP plan, and I'll refer to this later, is that they wanted that kind of a model that teachers would be teaching teachers in their professional development, and it's, and it's produced, I think, some terrific results as far as integrating technology in the, in the various classrooms across the district. So if you look at number five at the bottom, it says self-directed technology integration activities were conducted on superintendent's conference days, and that again goes to teachers teaching teachers and being able to do that. If you turn to the next page, the indicators of integration, these are, these are illustrative, but it's not all inclusive. And I wanted to just touch on a few of these things. We have an increased use of the carts. Again, we have mobile carts throughout our district, just now. As a matter of fact, our latest installation of carts was the installation of a total of five carts, five, six, seven carts at the high school now. Sorry, we have four Mac carts, two Chromebook carts, and an iPad cart at the high school. So that has been the latest infusion. We began at the elementary, worked our way to the middle school, and have now moved on to the high school, and that was the last infusion of, of technology that we did last fall. So, and as, as we've done that, we've increased the use of carts. As a matter of fact, what was sufficient for the middle school is now insufficient, because teachers are beginning to arm wrestle each other for the use of the carts. And we have a reservation system that they follow, and, you know, there's a lot of horse trading going on at the middle school right now, because the carts, they have 30 computers in each, in each cart, but not every class has a full complement of 30 students. So if I have a class of 20, then there's 10, 10 computers laying there, and what happens is, is teachers are allowing students to come in and borrow the other 10. It's not, it's a messy system, but, but so far, it's worked. But what it shows me is that there's a higher and higher demand for the use of technology in the various classrooms and in the curriculum. Couple other highlights in that area of indicators of integration would be that last year, I indicated that 30% of the summer curriculum projects were directly technology-related. The same percentage, and you see a question mark at number eight, because I didn't have the data at the time, but approximately, we have about 60 separate projects that are being funded this summer, and 18 of those are directly technology-integrated related things. So we're running at about a third, again, 30% of our, our projects are directly technology-related, and that's all coming from teachers. That's not coming from me or coming from Marvin or anybody else. It's teachers coming up with these things, saying, yes, I want to embrace technology in my classroom and being able to do that. Another highlight I thought was interesting this year is the English department, the high school wanted to do the final exam, and part of it is, is an essay, written piece. And they use laptops in the gymnasium, so we had, I don't know, 100, 150 kids in that gymnasium, I don't remember how many there were really, but we had three carts in there, and they signed out the laptops, typed their essays, printed them out, and teachers were able to have those instantaneously before they left from their final exam. Few logistical things that we would improve, but overall, it was a success. Students liked it, teachers liked it, and they plan on doing that again next year. But again, coming from teachers, not, not, it's being, it's integrating, again, technology into the curriculum. Then if you jump down to current, so these are, again, this is not an all-inclusive list, it's just illustrative of some of the things that we do. And these were some of the things that I was looking at, because it gives me hard facts. You know, I can give you some anecdotal information, but I wanted to give you some, these are the things that I looked at. If you look under current assessment, the CDEP plan cited five areas or five areas of strength in successful interventions or integration regarding technology. And many of them have to do with, you know, again, the infrastructure being trusted, and I'm summarizing here with all of these things, but they wanted to do those things. And if you look at number five, and you heard me speak about this earlier, teachers are afforded the opportunity to determine the focus of the staff development, and then just referring to that superintendent's conference day. It's a good model, but I think that at some points, we're going to have to balance that out with some more presentations of new technologies and emerging technologies, which was the impetus for this spring, or actually, about two weeks ago, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and myself went to Philadelphia for ISTI Conference. ISTI is the Educational Technology Conference that's held each year, and usually it's held in the West Coast, Midwest, and then the East Coast. And we caught it as it was on the East Coast. And so we spent some time there, and you'll be hearing a lot more about what we learned at that conference. I didn't have time to put that together for tonight's presentation, but there was, there was a, a number of seminars on tech integration and different models of integrating technology into the curriculum. So, but the CDEP does recognize that, that technology is being successful, successfully integrated into the curriculum, and, and actually, and I do like number five, because it says that they're taking ownership. It says that they want to own this thing. Now, also, the CDEP plan, if you look down towards the bottom of that page, says that these are kind of goals going on. If you look at number one, they talk about making the whole program, all the curriculum curriculum, aligned to the New York State technology learning standards, and I wrote that that's ongoing. The state's not done with those things, I don't know whether they ever will be, but, you know, it's an ongoing process. But one of the things that is happening that Marvin and I have noticed is that the summer curriculum project is tightening the curriculum, especially the technology-related ones. They all decide they're going to use, I don't know, say, PowerPoint for an activity. It pulls the teachers together. Instead of somebody doing a written report over here, somebody else doing more of a three-dimensional model over here, they're using a piece of technology. Maybe they're using a piece of technology to do a three-dimensional model. It doesn't matter. What we're saying is that, that as they work together, and as these teams work together during the summer, it's beginning to pull that together. What, what we need to do is now align that with the state standard as they, as they roll out. So that's, again, it's a continual process. I don't think it's a thing that we'll ever achieve, so to speak. Number two is the, exploring the feasibility and effectiveness of acquiring and deploying a K-12 learning management system, an LMS, such as Canvas, that's used primarily at the, at the middle school at this point. We spent, we spent quite a bit of time at the Canvas table at the ISTI conference, talking with those people and talking about successfully expanding that out. Again, it's a goal on our CDEP. We'd like to make it a goal here as far as technology integration is concerned as well. If we can expand that usage in the district, we'd like to do that. The difficulty and the logistics of that is that when a teacher has to put all of that curriculum up into this model, it's a time-consuming process. So we've got a lot of time for that to happen. It takes, I, I know that when I spoke with Henry Frischman, for instance, he was one of the first early adopters of the system, it's a big lift to put all that stuff in. But once it's there, it's good. Now all you're doing is modifying and changing it. What it also provides for us as administrators is it provides us a much, it's a, it's a repository for all the curriculum across the district. So we can sit there and see, and going down the road, looking at it down the road, is that if you can look at the curriculum and look at the assessments, then we can, we can see how students are being assessed and whether it's equitable, whether it's aligned across board, whether it's aligned with the New York State standard. So we want to be able to at least have a peek into that, not to control it, not to, you know, contort it in any way, but to know what it is. For instance, right now, I'm explaining this at the ISTI conference with one of the, one of the people, is that, yeah, a student might get a 95 in a course. Well, I, as an administrator, don't know how that's achieved. I know it's a 95, but was it through a bunch of tests? Was it one project? Was it, you know, how was, how were things weighted? How were things done? And I'm not saying that it needs to be one model, but we need to know what that model is, and parents need to know that as well. And one of the nice things about the, I just recently got an email from a parent having some difficulty, wants to get into Canvas and be able to see how their son or daughter is achieving the grade that they are. And so it's, 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 a lot of it has to do with community relations as well. And so Canvas provides a lot of that. And it's a desire, as, as you know from the CDEP, that was a, a shared decision-making process with teachers and everybody involved. And so Canvas is one of the, the teachers have even said, this is a route we possibly like to take, and, you know, look at the feasibility of it. Again, getting the stuff in is a, is a big lift, and so we have to learn to support that and move forward with that. So, so again, we did spend a lot of time at that table at the conference, talking with the, with the Canvas people. And I spoke about number three, about the outcomes and reinforcement is, if you look at the bottom or at the end of that, it says reinforcement is required. Again, the summer projects are tightening these, these standards, and I'm somewhat repeating myself there. Now, if you go down to number six, it says, "The district will identify gaps in technology integration and identify teachers in each building to help close those gaps through secondary integration technology positions." And I wrote that in the summer of 2019 to identify staff. That's an ongoing process right now. That has started. We've already, I've already had a meeting with the curriculum director and the three principals concerning that, and we're beginning to identify staff to do that. And what we want to do, and I guess I'm going to take a step back at this point, and say that what I've done for the last several years with this technology integration goal is I've looked at, at things from a, from a programming standpoint, from, I'm, I'm setting the table, in a sense, for, for teachers to be able to integrate technology into classrooms. So I want to provide all the resources, provide the, the, the software and, and the, so the activities that they could use in their classroom. Now we're at the point where that's been established. We've still got a ways to go in there, but, but we have established that. Trust has been built. Teachers want to step out. They want to step out of their comfort zones and do some things. So we've set that table. Now we've got to get down to the nitty-gritty and start to, and I think I referred to it as a surgical approach now, where we need to go in and say, okay, we have a teacher over here who's struggling with integrating technology, let's work with that individual. You know, and it's not in a punitive way, it's in a very positive way, it's a collaborative way, and we know that people have, you know, some hesitations and reservations by using technology. In some cases, it may not even be that appropriate, depending on, on the, on the subject and what's being taught at that time. So we have to look at all those things. There's not one mold fits all, and so we have to, have to realize that. So there has to be some latitude given to, to teachers in that way as well. So, so where we're at is that we, for the last couple of years, with technology integration, again, setting the table, again, clearing, you know, blazing the trail, so to speak, now we've got to push the people through and be able to help on an individual basis. And we've reached that point, I think, where we can do that, and so we want to be able to do that going forward. The next, the next three pages, they're a bit of a research, the next two pages, excuse me. This is what the research shows as barriers to technologies of integration, and I'm just going to look at them where I've numbered them. Lack of time, lack of expertise, lack of access, lack of resources, lack of support. Those are the stereotypical barriers that we have. And there's mitigation strategies, and they're listed in here as to what we can do. Some of this rhinebeck experiences, some of this rhinebeck does not. And so, but I bring it to you to say that some, these are the general barriers to, to integrating technology, and so we have to be, even though we may not be suffering from it in a major way, we need to be cognizant of it, and we need to be aware of it and be able to, to do, you know, I was, I felt a little bad at the last curriculum meeting, because I said, basically, what the research is saying, we need time and money. Well, that's a cliched response. Everybody can always say, we always need time and money. But in reality, it does take both of those things to do this. But in reality, it does take both of those things to do this. And so we're trying to find ways of creatively using the resources that we have to be able to take care of some of those things. And I didn't wanna dwell a lot on those things, because again, it is, some of that affects write-back in a major way, some things don't. So I wanted to just let you be aware that those are some of the things, there needs to be some of the strategies that we're looking at. If you look at the last page, these are some of the things that I just wanna conclude with, and that's the steps going forward. To meet with the principals and the curriculum director, and again, as I said, this, this does align with the CDEP goal of individuals needing assistance through some kind of mentoring program, some kind of integration assistance. And that is, that is, that process is already begun. So we've had our first meeting, we planned several more throughout the summer, and we plan to, to launch out in the fall, so that we'll be able to target individuals in each building to do that, using our tech integrator and being able to do it in some other strategies as well. And I do wanna say, we have tried some other things. I didn't mention this in the report, and I haven't mentioned this in probably several years, but there were other things that we did try that did not succeed. For instance, I, I tried, I think my second year here, Tech Tuesdays, I think is what I called it, where I would go into a building and basically park myself in that building for the day, and say, if you have a question, you know, if you have anything technology-related, come and we can discuss. Now, I had my computer and I can still do my work mobile, you know, in a mobile fashion. So I prepared for those days, that everything I'd be doing that day would be basically on the computer. The response wasn't high. From, I got, I got a few, a few people coming down, a few people sitting down and talking with me and sharing some of their hesitations and their reservations about things. But overall, I didn't feel it was a successful endeavor on my part. And the, and the response was the same in all three buildings. And so no one building was weaker than another. It was almost unilaterally the same response. The other thing I've tried is going to faculty meetings and doing like a ten-minute tech, you know, TED Talk kind of thing, you know, or a ten-minute one at the faculty meeting. I find that those, I didn't get a lot of response from that as well. And I also felt like I was only throwing out a bone and not really delving into the nitty-gritty of what an individual teacher might need. So we did try a couple of other things, but those did not work, and quite frankly, the research shows that those don't work as well. So should've done my research before I actually tried some of these things, so. But, but we did try those things, and, but there was still some people who did come and then expressed some things, and so those people, the ones that I can still talk to and still converse with, and it was, for some of them, it was a very difficult process to come to and say, hey, I'm lacking here. And it's like, so, there's nothing wrong with that. We'll move forward, you know, we'll go from here. Very positive things. There's no, you know, judgment or, you know, condescension in any way, shape, or form. Good people have their strengths and they have their weaknesses. We also plan to do a multi-year plan. That'll be starting in the fall, working with teachers on some of that. We're gonna follow to see how this tech integration mentoring model goes forward. And we're gonna start monitoring that, obviously, in the fall, see what works, see what doesn't work, adjust, modify, change things. We're still gonna use the reservation system for this, and then we have some accountability as to where our tech integrator's going to be, when, and with whom, and all of those kinds of things. We wanna not just make it a freelance endeavor, we wanna be able to do it, so that, and primarily, the tech integrator's been located in this building. So now we're, we're gonna be expanding out into the other two buildings. And so there'll be less time here, but, but the reservation system is sophisticated enough that we can block out times and teachers will be able to say, okay, on Tuesdays, if there's availability, or I can avail myself to a tech integration endeavor here, because they're available. Just the person can block it out, to just say, okay, from eleven to twelve, I'm unavailable. And we will know where that, where that, where that individual attention is being given and to whom. And then I just wanted to also, again, number four is talking about the superintendent's conference day. We'd like to use that day to target some of those staff members. And number five is really just more of, the last one is really more of, these are different ideas that actually, as I wrote these, I found myself talking about these things at the ISTI conference, and some of the speakers that we attended from the sessions, they, they did talk about a lot of these things, and it was kind of interesting. But they talked about shadowing staff, visiting other schools, the mentoring model, you know, just having someone there, somebody who's, who's in your own discipline. If I'm a science teacher at the high school and I need help, who better than somebody who's technically astute in my discipline and helping me with that? And we find that that's very effective to do that, rather than somebody who, I'm an English major, got this to be doing, you know, a tech integration piece with you. It's better to have it within your own discipline, if possible. That's not always going to be the case, it's not always going to be feasible to do that, but we wanna be able to look at that. Also, the opportunity to take enhancements courses, that would be, some of those would be online. There are a lot of courses out there now, helping teachers to develop those skills. And I think that's something we should take a serious look at, that, and being able to, because they can do it at their own pace, they can set their own schedule, and seminars and conferences, and in fact, we'll be talking about ISTI conference next, next year, it's in Anaheim, I believe it is, June twenty-eighth through the first, and Mark and I are, well, school's out, maybe we can, you know, but again, it's a long ways, but, but really, that conference was really not for systems engineers, network people, tech-type people. It was truly for educators. I mean, it was, it was seminar after seminar on how to bring technology into the curriculum and how to do that. So it was really an educator, if you were a teacher, you were in, you're in Disneyland, so to speak. I mean, it was just a wonderful experience for a lot of, a lot of people. So I would highly recommend that we take a look at that, even if it comes around, you know, to fill it again in three years. But, but again, these conferences are available, and some teachers are availing themselves. So I think we need to, to push them out and be able to do that, so. So that, that in a nutshell is what we've done. Again, it's been very general in our approach, and now we're going specific, you know, specific needs. And we're not gonna get everybody that needs integration in the first year. This is not gonna, you know, happen in ten months, starting in September. It's gonna be multi-year. We're gonna, we're gonna pick maybe three people from the high school, three people from the middle school, three from the elementary. And again, I'm just throwing out these numbers as random. But, but that way, we can, and we know that there might be more. We know that some teachers wanna go deeper. You know, some people who might be astute, they wanna do a deep dive into something. Well, that's, that's a need as well, and just as legitimate as I just wanna start out. So we're trying to, you know, trying to, it's a multi-pronged approach, and we have, you know, some limited resources, but we're doing the best we can, and I think we can find some creative ways to, to address that. Are there any questions? I know I've kinda rambled there quite a bit, but, yeah, Mark, go ahead.
I have a bunch of questions, so I don't wanna monopolize everybody's time. If other people wanna jump in somewhere, please do. But, so my first question is, we have devices of all different platforms. I'm just wondering, I know a lot of the raw carts, maybe you just tell me roughly how many carts do we have for each device, or?
Sure.
The number of devices, or?
Yeah, yeah, you can give me kind of like thirty-five thousand, yeah, sure. What we have is, most carts that I speak of are gonna have thirty devices in them each, okay? Most of them. There's one exception, and that's the high school iPad cart, which has twenty. Okay, so let's start the kindergarten. Kindergarten, first and second, each have one cart per grade, one cart for kindergarten, one for second, the one for first, one for second, and they are iPads. That's the platform. When they hit third, fourth, and fifth, they, they each have a cart per grade, and those are Macintosh Air computers, Mac Airs. And that's what they have, again, thirty in a cart. The library has a cart. And there are a few iPads scattered about from special projects for, like, third grade has a robotics project, and they have extra iPads, and, you know, I think they have like ten that we're, we're actually deploying this fall. The, the middle school has one for sixth, one for seventh, one for eighth, one for the LLL team, and an iPad cart. So they have five in the, in the middle school. And then the high school has four Mac Air carts. They have two Chrome carts, which the English department brought to grant and applied and got that. And they have an iPad cart, which is used in our phys ed program and some other programs, and that has the twenty in it. And I may have missed a card in there or two, but I think that's generally what we have. So we have, we have some mixed, you know, you have a mixed experience that the computer lab, for instance, at the middle school is a PC-based lab, as well as the project lead way lab that's down, downstairs, those are both PC-based environments there.
Okay. Just to follow up on that is, how do we account for all that inventory? I mean, we have thirty carts on a laptop, or thirty devices on a cart, and, you know, a class of twenty is using them, somebody might borrow one, and then?
Right.
Nobody knows where it went.
Yeah, we've had that, we've had to chase them down. We've had a few cases where that has happened. I think right now officially, since we started this program, there's only one laptop that we know is officially in IA right now, just to let you know that we're aware of one. But today, for instance, Brendan sent out to the elementary staff through an email, you know, hoping that people read it, saying, hey, we're missing the second, you know, cart, or iPad number two out of the, you know, out of the second grade cart, or something like that. But they usually, you know, they invariably show up, somebody's borrowing, and somebody's using it. The way we do the borrowing system right now, which again, is a little messy, and I'm not sure if I can come up with a, a cleaner way to do, to do this, but if you borrow a card, so I walk into Mrs. Jones's class and I'm gonna borrow one, I put a piece of paper in there saying, Steve Jones, and I slide a piece of paper in the slot from the cart, the laptop I took, so that at least we know who it was that took that. Now, whether that's followed every time, I would say, I would not say that that happens all, every time. It happens most of the time, and we're able to, you know, get them back, because the teachers have really taken ownership and watched them closely. So that, but that's the method right now, is you just slide in a card. And if there's one that goes out, for instance, that needs to be repaired, Brendan or Michelle will simply put on their, you know, helpful repair, slide it in there. So the teacher isn't looking for, you know, number twenty-seven, you know, all twenty-sevens down, so we gotta, you know, take care of that. So that's really how we're doing it. We've talked about looking at electronic system, you know, where you actually sign it out like a barcode system, like you would in the library. We've looked at that, but it's, it still takes oversight. Whether I'm sliding a card in there, or whether I'm scanning it, it still requires some intervention of the teacher to do that. And right now, we're, the, the comments coming from the middle school in particular, are, this is, it's getting tough, and they're looking for another cart, you know, because of all this. I've actually thought about taking and looking at possibly diffusing it just by a cart and pulling five off of each cart. Now I'm down to twenty-five, but I have to go make sure that I don't have a class that exceeds twenty-five, otherwise I run, you know, you get jammed up in that way. So like to do it that way, and just have an extra cart, so I have twenty-five in a cart and just have an extra cart created that way, that can be used and signed out. So, if that answers your question?
Just a follow-up. Do you know how many classes, I mean, how we came to having thirty per card? It sounds higher than maybe all of our classes.
Right. When I ask the principals at the time, I go, what's your maximum class size? Because you gotta, unfortunately, you gotta know the highest number. And I would hear numbers of twenty-seven, I hear above twenty-five, twenty-five plus, let's just put it that way. So I knew I had to get up there. The carts have thirty in them. The other thing that you want to build in is a little bit of attrition, because a couple of them are down, so that's why we, we went to that. I mean, it was our best stat at that, what we thought would be the optimum number. The carts do accommodate thirty, but again, as I just explained, we might want to reduce that down if the class sizes, for instance, the middle school didn't have a class above twenty-five, then I would probably do something like that and move them off. But, but then the next year, if they had a class with twenty-eight in it, and we're jammed up again. Or the other model is to have a cadre of, what's called a mini tub or a mini cart, maybe a pen in it, that you just have around, that's just for that overage, for that spillage that people could use. So that's another model too, which we've considered. But again, what we wanted to do in this case was, we wanted the growth to start. When we first deployed those computers at the College of Technology Middle School as an example, that demand wasn't there yet. It built over the period about three years. As teachers began to use it more and more, then they, they got hungry and hungrier for the technology, and so, so you gotta eat, so to speak, you know. Yeah. Steve?
Do you have a couple, two questions. One on the devices and then one on the CDEP plan. On the devices is, what's your sense that the curriculum gets to a, a point where having a one-to-one cart to a person to a device makes sense?
In, well, that really depends to me, and I, I, this could be, you know, debated, but the, but you have to have, if you only have one teacher, let's say, let's use a high school for it, let's use a high school English department that bought Chromebooks and immersed themselves into this technology. Doesn't one-to-one, is it justified if that's the only department that's going to do that and use it every day? So you've gotta build the capacity of the staff. Whether we're there yet, I don't know whether we're quite there to, to, to demand or, you know, to justify a one-to-one. I'd like to see, you know, the other departments, and the other departments are making gains. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, but certainly right now, the lead department right now has been the English department with what they did with the Chromebooks. But, you know, the other departments are going to go more and more that way. And I think because of the infusion of the technology there, now they're beginning to build their lesson plan, and that'll take a couple of years, actually, to build into that curriculum. And if they get hungry and place their number of carts as well, then, then yeah, then we, then it becomes, there's a tipping point at some point, where you say, yeah, now we're ready to go one-to-one, because this is, this is not sustainable. The other thing that you can do, when you do that model, and I, and I thought about this, is we already have existing, I have thirty in a cart. I mean, how, you know, so let's say, how many carts did I say it was at the middle school? Three grades plus the four, so let's say I have four, four carts of thirty, and that's a hundred and twenty computers already that could be deployed in only one scenario. So I'm already like a third of the way there, as it is using this model now. So if we can get there, question is, where is that tipping point? I don't know if I, I can accurately say where that is, but, but I, I would say that the, right now, because of what I've seen, and it's only because of they've had it on versus the middle school, it's probably closer to that tipping point than the high school would be right now.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, I appreciate all the work that you've done over the last couple of years. I know this is not an easy topic. It's a lot of light work, research, and groundwork to lay the foundation for, let them build on. For me, the goal this year, last year, I guess, was, you know, equality and equitable experiences across grades, right? So when I look at the CDEP plan, that's really three, five, and six, right? It's developing technology curriculum that includes third-grade level outcomes, skill checklists. Five is integration literacy and technology curriculum integration, and then six is identifying the gaps. So to me, that was the goal, right? So I love that it's here, but it's not done, and there's no dates. So I'm very nervous that this is just gonna keep slipping out into the future.
Well, I, yeah, I would say we're making progress on those things. The problem is, is I don't know how to quantify it for you. I can say, well, they're using more English or, yeah, but how to quantify that, and again, this is somewhat, we're, we've had this discussion quite a bit, because I worked quite a bit with Mark, but is, how do you quantify how that's done? And LMS helps with that. We see the activities, we know everything that's going on. That's, I think, more of the issue. I see it, I see it happening, but I don't know how to express it to you to say, well, yeah, it's happening and it's successful because of, there's no way to quantify it for you. And that, I think I had that conversation at the curriculum committee, because they said it was anecdotal in many ways, to say that. So I would say that we're making progress in those areas, but I'm not sure how exactly to express that, you know, in quantifiable terms. And, and so, I mean, I would love to take, I thought about it, I was walking down, around the elementary building, it had to be end of May, beginning of June, and I said, a board member needs to be walking with me right now, because there are kids out in the hall, sitting down on the floor, they were typing away, they were working collaboratively in these groups, and I could say, look.
Text me, I rub them right there.
I will do that. I seriously, I would do, I will do up on that, because I said, this is what they need to see, but I can't describe that to you. I can't, you know, I don't know how to do that. That's what I've been struggling with for two years with this goal, is like, I don't know how to do that, because I see it, I can walk in. And then there's other classrooms where I walk in, I go, it's not happening.
Right. And I think you work from K up, right?
Yeah, that's where my goal is, to do that.
If everybody at CLS is, you know, equal with respect to their knowledge and use, then going into the BMS computer lab, for example, everybody's on the same page day one, as opposed to three weeks or six weeks being spent on catching everybody else up.
Correct.
So I think it has impact later on, and I really would like to see that, more of a focus and getting that across CLS.
Yep. Yep. Okay, yeah, work on that with, with you. Yeah, actually, maybe you have to have a discussion on that a little more. That'd be great.
Um, so, uh, I have two different kinds of, um, questions. One related to money. Um, do teachers want extra money? Do, or need extra money to support their uploading curriculum to campus? Is that a, is that a money issue? And also-
It's time. It's, they need time to do that.
Right, so paid.
For instance, uh, some of the superintendent's conference days, some of the teams, I'll, I'll just say Team A, you know, we'll identify them. But they said, we wanna spend the day uploading into campus. Well, that's money out of our pocket. I mean, it's a day, but we did that. You know, it didn't cost us anymore. They were already here, we're gonna pay them anyways. Um, but those are the kinds of things that we need to do more of. And if we're going to, let's say we move campus up into the high school, as an example. Again, with, as one of the things identified in the CDEP plan, um, if we do that, then we're gonna have to give time for those teachers to upload that. And, and maybe it goes through superintendent's conference days and after school for, you know, but it does take, as, as one administrator put it, it, it's a heavy lift. But once it's there, it's, it's, it's good. And, and, you know, I could bring teacher after teacher up, that would tell you benefits that they've, they've experienced doing that. The problem is, is that, and from a parental point of view, and this is why I think it's important that we really take this learning management system seriously, is that I have a, I have a son or daughter in the middle school, and everybody's on campus. I get to ninth grade, and you gotta go to this website, you gotta go to this campus, or I've got this over here, or I've got this Google Apps for Education over here. And, and all, all that's good. It's all good stuff. But, they've gotta jump around. It's like, man, it's so much simpler when I just had one place I could go to see how Johnny was doing in, in English or whatever.
It's not just for the parents and the teachers. I mean, the students benefit as well, like having everything there. So if they miss a day or two at school, or they forgot their book at school, everything's online that they can go back and, and redo. So, you know, it's, it's really important for everybody.
Do you know about what the range of numbers of hours it takes teachers to, to do that heavy lift? I mean, or-
I, I will, I will quote one teacher, one of the earlier doctors, Henry, I'm sure he doesn't care, hundreds of hours, he said. It took me hundreds of hours to do this.
Hundreds.
Hundreds. Because it took, he had to load those things up, break it down into, basically had to take everything that he had and break it into a hundred and eighty days. And break it down into, this is the assignment, this is the readings, this is the assessment, this is the, you know, and, and write that all down. And it, and it takes a while. I think if you get started though, and you just, you know, maybe you don't do the whole course. Maybe we start out with teachers doing a quarter. Just, you know, take a, take a step into that realm and do that. But, it's, it's a lift. It, it takes a lot of time. And I, you know, as a person who has a master's in curriculum, I know what that entails. My own curriculums for the courses I taught, it was a long, it was, it was, it was arduous. It was a long process to do it. Plugging it in is just, it's, it's, you can't just do it in advance and just say, okay, take all this and cut and paste and-
So superintendent's day really doesn't cut it?
It, it gets a start, because you can start to doing, I mean, in eight hours, you can do, let's say it takes a hundred hours, let's just for math sake, and you get ten hours worth of work in, you're, you're ten percent of the way in, you know. But it does take some time. And I think, uh, we've been talking about looking at the summer curriculum as, you know, projects, as maybe, you know, supporting, supporting it that way as well. So there's, there's a lot of different ways to do this.
And, an, another money question. Um, you mentioned on the last page in steps going forward in number five, enhancement courses, seminars and conferences. Is that, do we have money built in? I mean, is that in the budget that-
Well, I, I myself don't have any professional, I don't have a budget line for professional development. So I usually go with a tin cup and hand it to my neighbor Marvin, and I say, do you have any monies and be able to do that? Um, and, you know, and matter of fact, he, he, he was able to support me in, in going to the ISPE conference this, this year. I mean, I, I supported some of it, but he, he carried the, the major expense of that, be able to do that. But, uh, but right now, I don't have any. But, but again, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing, because I think you really need to say, this is a curriculum issue. This is, this is really an education. It's not a, you know, lots and bolts technology, you know, issue. It's really a curriculum issue, and you want that focus to be on the curriculum. And so, I, I think it's appropriate.
Um, so, lastly, you know, I do, I wanna echo what Steve said, appreciating, you know, all the, that you've, um, done so far and, and brought us to here. But, I see a gap between, you know, we've got these goals on page two, tech-related goals, um, with the CDEP plan, and then steps going forward, which are ideas. But I'm not seeing, like, a plan, like way to get to these goals. And, um, and I would like to see that more fleshed out, like steps, not just general steps, but like, really fairly concrete steps. And I think, um, it, and it may just be the outsider's perspective of like, no, you just don't know enough yet to, to get it, um, of how complicated it is. I totally get that that's possible. Um, but, what Steve was pointing out about the specific CDEP goals, um, they do seem to me like things, okay, well, you can, checkmark, you can say, okay, do we have a K to five technology curriculum with clear grade level outcomes, skill checklists and necessary equipment in each classroom? That, those all seem like checkmarkable things to say, yes, we have that. Um, and if we don't have that, here's our plan to get that. Here are the steps, and here's when we'll get it, here's what needs to happen. Um, and, and for each of, for each of the, the numbers that Steve pointed out, those all seem to me, I mean, you know, the information literacy and technology curriculum to integrate and align library technology and classroom experiences. That's something which, like, yes, you can develop the curriculum, and then if it's done, you say, yes, here it is, we have it. You know, so, I'd like to see for each of these tech-related goals, this-
More point, more point of thought.
Right, right. Not just the, I mean, I think it's wonderful that our classrooms and hallways are full of kids using technology. I certainly see it as a parent, and I appreciate it. Um, but, I think we can, I think you can get a lot more specific, um, without having to quantify. It can still be qualitatively described of, like, here are the things specifically in the goal, goals, and here's which ones have been met and which ones haven't. And my last point, um, is at the very beginning, talking about the background, um, the CELT report goals with the sixty-eight goals. Um, and you may have given us the, this last year, but for the new members and, um, my refreshing, uh, I would love to see a refresh, a recap of which ones were not pursued by decision? And which ones are incomplete?
Okay. Yeah, and, and there were several subcategories, one was complete.
Yeah, I remember the big long list, but-
Yeah, and then the one that was not pursued. I think the other one was ongoing, you'll never achieve it because it's just-
Right, it's a, a moving target, sure. That makes sense. But, but, but the ones specifically pulled out of, which, which do we decide not to do intentionally, and which ones are incomplete? Thank you.
Yep.
Mark?
Um, so, I think it's important, you know, whatever platform we're gonna adopt, if it's Canvas or some other one, that eventually we get to a point where everyone's using it. Um, I know, years ago, I was frustrated because we had teacher websites, and some teachers use them, some teachers don't use them, some teachers have one, but they don't update it. Um, I think it's, it's important that we get everybody to adopt it, and everybody's using it so that there isn't frustration amongst parents or whoever about, well, like, my, my kid has this teacher, but he doesn't use the thing, so now I gotta check in with the teacher to see how he's doing. Um, so, I think along the lines of what Jacqueline was saying, and I think I'd like to see a, um, some sort of, an idea of, you know, how, how long it's gonna be before we go from early adopters to everybody using it? And, you know, how long it's gonna take?
Right. Yeah. I think one of the approaches that we, we took, and, and it's not uncommon that this happens, but when there's ever the technology, it kind of becomes, as, as it's been discussed before, uh, with a couple of conversations I've had, it's like the Wild West. It's like, everybody does what they're, and there's advantages to doing that, letting everybody kind of do their own thing, because then they get engaged, they're not afraid, the trepidation is, is, you know, it's a swage. And, and you have a, a sense of, okay, now you're, you're into this. But now, but then the pendulum has to swing the other way, as you're saying. Now we need to focus that. We need to say, okay, now you've adopted, let's take this that you've now embraced and begin to focus it. Let's, let's use Canvas as an example, or a website, or whatever it is, and begin to say, okay, let's, let's get some consistency across the board in being able to do that. But, again, sometimes when you initially roll out something, you're looking for the adoption, not necessarily consistency. And, and I think that that's what we experienced here. And, uh, I think we, for, even before I got here, it was, it was that way. You know, and, and that's not uncommon for a district. It was, you know, atypical, it's very typical.
The list you're bringing up?
No, it's, I just, I just wanted to piggyback. I know you're not done. Um, but, I, I think that's a great point. Uh, and do you, and I'm wondering, do you already have a list of like, here are all the teachers, teachers in our districts, and here's who's you, like, okay, this teacher in kindergarten is using a website, and it's up to date, or it's not up to date. This teacher is using Canvas, this percentage, or whatever. Do you have a list with all the people and-
We, we don't, I don't have that officially put together, but it's easy to get. In other words, all I have to do is go to Canvas and look at the usage report. I can go into the website and see the usage report and say, okay, um, you know, somebody hasn't updated their site in two years, so I know, you know.
Yeah.
I can tell those things. I can see teachers today actually working on their website. It was interesting, you know, and say, oh, someone, someone was on their website today, you know, changing it for next year, probably, you know, getting it set up. So that's easy. We can get that, and that's, to me, that's quantifiable stuff. You know, you're able to say, okay, this is what we're doing in these areas. And, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, we've, we've talked quite a bit with curriculum about putting this stuff in one place. So you have this picture, you know, of, of the curriculum and saying, okay, this is what we're doing here, and this is how it moves. And, and this is, you know, we're maybe weak in reading at this grade level, so we need to strengthen that, you know, because we're seeing, we're seeing patterns. And you're able to, to adjust and say, okay, well, that's the curriculum you need to deal with, not the rest of it. It's all working down here in the lower grades, it's all working on either side of it, but here's a weakness. And that's what we wanna, wanna get to. But yeah, we can quantify that. We know, um, you know, without having to do all individual interviews, pretty much what each teacher is doing in their classroom. You know, not specifically every day, but, you know, to that level, uh, we would know. But that's why I, I would embrace an LMS, quite frankly, because it helps put that stuff together, so that we can all see it. It becomes a much more transparent process for parents and staff and, you know, colleagues.
Good. Oh, I'm just gonna ask you about the mentoring program, how that works. Because I imagine for a teacher that's not comfortable in technology, as much as they plan a lesson using it, and they're prepared for it, it must be terrifying, the thought of like being in the middle of it, or kids having questions, and you have no idea what to do, and there's no help desk to call, right? So, you know, I'm just wondering how that's gonna work. Like, will they be able to go in the classroom with them, you know, when they maybe are gonna do something, or like, how is it gonna work?
That, that, there would be no consistent way of doing that. That's, that's the problem, is I can't sit there and say, well, this mentoring, like, when we have, well, let's use the, the new teacher mentoring program that we use currently have. I'm sure that's done a hundred different ways. You know, and you know that when a grade comes out, the mentor goes and teaches the, the new teacher how to do this, I'm sure it's done either during, like, all around the school, or, you know, a hundred different ways of doing that. I think what we need, I think the fear of the technology failing though, I think that that's one that is becoming much less of an issue than when I first got here, that would come out and, I mean, things would just crash and burn, you know.
Not just failing, but just the question that they might have, and they're like, I didn't, you know.
Exactly, exactly. And, and one of the things, um, I, I was talking, I had been about it, is revisiting the, uh, the idea of the Gen Yes program, which I think is something we need to possibly look at. Because, uh, I spent quite a bit of time at that table as well, and talking with, uh, with the, the folks there. It's a fabulous program. From those, uh, from there, it's a, it's a student help support desk, where the students actually, as part of their public service, assist teachers. So, you might have somebody in your class that's a Gen Yes individual that, okay, well, you know, this broke, the printer's jammed, this is the, and they have the permission of the district to be able to intervene and to help. And then it's called, it's used, what's called a TAP program, which is the teacher assistance program, where the teacher taps. It's, it's all, it's not imposed by the teacher, the teacher asks for that help. You know, hey, can I get some help on presenting this? Or, you know, could somebody be in my, you know, yeah, I got a site called, you know, Mr. Smith, I can come in and sit down and make sure that everything's running and just run interference with it. A lot of times, some of the things, especially when you introduce a new lesson, lesson with technology, you need just an extra set of hands in there, just to walk around the room logistically as you're teaching, and say, well, yeah, you gotta click to the right, or you gotta double-click this, or you, you know, right-click that, or, or, you know, those kinds of things. That's something a student would, you know, and then it teaches them all kinds of responsibilities and all kinds of great lessons. And, and so, uh, they were there, they had a presence there at, at the, at the conference as well, and, and they gave me some more information that I think we should. And we are, uh, when we, when we joined that, we ended up with a lifetime membership. So we are still part of that program. It's not something we, we have to buy again. We bought it, and we, we have it.
Oh, sorry. Is there a reason why, I, I remember you talking about that, you know, years ago now.
Yeah, there was some reluctance on, on, on some staff's part, and, and, so, but we could discuss that, you know, at another time. But the, but there was just reluctance, I think more fear of the unknown more than anything. And I think we just need to, you know, possibly revisit that and say, hey, what do you think?
My recollection was it was more fear of the unknown and having a kid help you.
Well, yes.
I'm not saying it's right or different, but I think-
It's a different kind of change with the comfort level.
It might have changed.
Yeah, it might have a while. And, and community service for the kids is a bonus, but in a minute, the kid might
sit there for a week or nobody using it. But eventually, someone will be desperate enough to-
It's tapped, you need it, you know, so we're just, you know, it wouldn't be sitting there. But, but it's a, it's a great program, and I'll, I'll send you some information that I got from that. I'll send it to Joe to share with you on that and go from there.
Yeah, I'm always saying that was the hesitation several years ago. As Steve mentioned, if more people are comfortable, they may be less intimidated with, with the support.
You could have someone available every hour that can help us.
I think the best way is, I think, teachers are willing now more to take the risk that they weren't before. And I think that that's a huge plus. We, and I think we need to leverage that. And if we can do that, that'd be great. And, and that'd be a cost-effective way of doing that. So, and I, I myself wanna spend more time in the classroom if I can this year, you know, doing, and just helping with, you know, an individual project myself. I'd like to take one or two teachers under my wing, even, you know, myself, and, and do that. Because one of the things I, I need to understand is what are the logistical issues, what are the barriers that they're experiencing that I may not be aware of myself? And here I am, implementing programs and not realizing what some of the things are that may be standing in the way or, or hindering things. So, it's, it's good for me to have some skin in the game. So.
Yeah, so I just have one more question. So, I mean, you have a lot of obstacles and things listed here. Assuming we could overcome all those things, what do you see us needing to do over the next five or ten years to adopt the next, you know, technology changes all the time?
Yeah, it does. I, I, I think, I think we, in five to ten years, we should be at one-to-one. We should be there. Um, that, that'd be one of the, so if we're not signed out, it, it just becomes a tool, just like a pencil. Um, I think that one of, I think the area of, um, a couple of things that I would address, one is cybersecurity and cyber safety. I mean, those are, I think that that is a, um, it's a very scary realm out there, what, what kids are encountering nowadays. We, we have access to very adult materials at a very young age, and, and we need to address that particularly in this building to, to start with that, that issue. Um, and all of us, and I'm sure that, have experienced some kind of scam, some kind of phishing, you know, emails, all those kinds of things. And, uh, those, the, the cybersecurity industry alone right now is, is lacking 3.1 million workers right now. It's a huge opening field for, for students who wanted to get into that. And, and I had a long conversation with Marvin about the possibilities of a cybersecurity program here. Um, the question is logistics, but, but they also know, the Department of Homeland Security has seventeen courses designed for the K-12 round in cybersecurity. Just that, just that low, seventeen courses. There are other ones, Cyber Patriot, and, even if you're a federal employee, there's the FPTBE program, I can't remember the acronym exactly, but online courses that you could take. Cyber Patriot is basically a competition where, where teams get together, they work together to solve cybersecurity issues, and they go to conferences and they, they compete against one another. It's, um, it's, it's an awareness thing that I think that we need to, the computers aren't just toys. You know, a lot of people, few of them, it's that. And we need to say, no, this is very serious stuff, and there's a lot of serious things happening. And, but the career opportunities out there, particularly for people coming out of high school, is huge. Programs are, Albany's opened up their program. They were the first in the country, and now they're popping up all over the place because the demand is so great right now. They can't, I, I've gotten solicitations on, on LinkedIn, kind of, that I have, saying, you wanna come work? Because I, because I have just some experience in the field, you know, and I'm, you know, and I've had some courses in cybersecurity. But that's, that's how desperate the, the, the field is. And there are, there are students who would love to do that, you know, the, the skill sets that you learn and how to, and how to be responsible, and how, because they're, they're given a great deal of responsibility. I mean, these, these students would know, if they can prevent a hack, they gotta know how to hack, in a sense. You know, and so they have to, and they have to treat that responsibly, and how to do that. And I think that those are, so ten years- And I think that those are, so 10 years down the line, yeah, I think everybody's gonna have a, a device, but that's a device that could be abused and disused and I think that that's where we need to pay attention. Yes, we can teach math and English and science with those things, but, but I, I'm more concerned about how we use that tool than what's being taught on it at that point, from a technology standpoint. If I'm a scientist, a science teacher, I'm gonna have a different perspective, but from a technology standpoint, I want, I want kids to be safe. I want them to be able to handle themselves well in this world and then know the dangers and, and be able to protect themselves, be able to do that. But that's, again, I'm sure after I leave here, I'm gonna think of plenty of other things to answer that question, but, but those are the two things that pop up in my mind right now.
Do you feel that in the five years, if it's, if it's one-on-one with the, do you feel that in five years too, our teachers will be up to speed on the technology that we're doing?
Yeah, I think, I think the, the staff that we've, we've got in place right now are, for the most part, very accepting of it. I would say I don't know a single staff person who's adverse to it. They may not embrace it, but they're not adverse to it. And there was a time where, and Joe probably remembers, you know, there, there was, you know, when email was first introduced in this district, you know, I, I wasn't here, but I've heard the story, that was, that was some resistance, you know? Oh, what do you mean email? Well, now, I mean, it's just common, it's embraced by people, it's the way we do business, you know, through something like, I just use that as an example. So I would say that, yeah, within five years, I think you would definitely have the majority of, the significant majority of teachers being technologically astute enough to deliver instruction and to use it effectively. But to use it effectively is a, is a skill to be developed. It's not just, well, I'm just using computers. That, that's not what we need to do. We need to look at, at different models like the SAMR model, which is a model where, are you just substituting your computer for the chalkboard? Well, that's just substitution. You, you wanna do something deeper, you wanna do deeper with it and make it something that, that you're not just substituting, you know, just using it as an entertainment machine, you know, to entertain kids, but you wanna augmentation, modification and redefinition, those are the other levels. And they all tell you how to use technology at a higher level than what you used before. Yeah, I can use it as a, as a glorified chalkboard, you know, or, or, you know, fancy presentations, but, but it's not more than that. How do I research? How do I, and I know that that's one thing our librarians are working on all the time. What's junk research compared to actual research? I don't just Google, you know, research is not just Googling something and just typing it in, you know? You gotta know what it is that you're looking at and you gotta be, and this goes back to the current thing that just happened far, gotta be discerning about what it is that you're seeing out there and, and being able to be the good, they call it digital citizenship, but that's really, it's being, it's learning how to operate in this world that's highly technical. And I think our teachers will be there. I think, I think there, the way I, I thought about using this term tonight, and that was, I think the trajectory that we're on is the right one. And I think we're getting there, we're, we're going in the right direction, but, and we have ways to go, but we're, we're in the right place. And I think we're going the right place in, in five years. I, I would see that we're being very successful in integrating technology.
How many, what would you say is like the percentage of our staff that is in need, probably in need of the mentoring and not really?
I, that's, that's hard to say. I, I'm, I would probably say 15%. I'm gonna roughly say 15, 20% maybe are, are, are in need of some. And I would say a higher percentage of that would wanna go deeper than what they're going right now. And then, you know, then you have your, your echelon, your, your high flyers that are always on the cutting edge all the time. You don't have to even worry about them. You almost like pulling them back, you know? But, but, but they're, but that happens and, you know, when new staff comes on, you know, they, they come in with a different skill set than, than the retirees going out, though we've lost some very technically astute retirees, you know, who have grown with their profession over the years to their credit. But again, they, they didn't have the skill sets coming in, they hadn't developed those. Well, now we've got people coming in with those skill sets because they've grown up as, as digital natives, so to speak, and then so a lot of that fear and trepidation that we have, oh, am I gonna break this? No, you're not gonna break it, it'll be okay. Go ahead, jump in. So, so I think we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
If this is really more discussion about process, you know, at our last meeting, we talked about using some of our goals from this year and updating them, okay? So we don't have to, we have to do the updating, obviously, but we don't have to reinvent that wheel. So the question is, we're, we're gonna be getting together on Thursday, July 25th at 6:00 PM in the, in the district office conference room to develop or redevelop board goals for the coming year. So I just wanted us to take a few minutes to discuss what process we're gonna use. For example, in other years, and I'm not saying this to say we have to do it the same way, but in other years, we had board members submit their ideas for goals to the board president, for example, and then the board president would kind of collate them and send them out to everybody before that goal developing meeting. So we weren't going in with a, with a blank slate, we were going in at least with some ideas. And not every idea that got surfaced was able to, or should have been, a goal, but at least we could look at, you know, a dozen different ideas and say, you know what, these are really the, the three highest priorities for us. So that's what our goal should be, should be based on. And then we could wordsmith those goals. If we don't do something like that, and I'm not saying we have to do that in particular, we'll get together in a room and we'll be having this conversation then, like, what, how do we, how do we do this? So I thought I'd put that on our agenda so we could be, especially since that meeting's only about three weeks away. So we can talk about a process that board members feel comfortable with and think would be productive and we're not getting into a room and starting with a, with a blank slate. So I'm not sure, I mean, a number of you have been through a process before, so you're not starting from, from scratch.
I mean, I think it's been helpful in the past to send ideas sometimes, and at least people that start thinking about it and it's something they never considered, because if we just start with that, you know, it's gonna be around even if we, I think it's starting. I mean, we did talk last time about at least two of the goals seems like they need to carry forward, but that's, that may not happen, but I think even those two goals, we need a lot of work as in what they're gonna look like for next year. But I think, you know, certainly either sending ideas about what those goals should look like, or new ideas, you know, to get everybody to start thinking about it, or maybe we'll require data that you'll have to get, or something, more information. So I think starting that process ahead of time is gonna help us. The sooner we, I always feel like the sooner we get those done, then the administrators can look at them, they can put things into the area based on that. So the sooner we're done with it, the better. So I think that's helpful.
What would be the easiest way to familiarize yourselves with goals, efforts, or what? The minutes or?
I can just give you a list of the goals. I mean, they're, they're not, you know, they're not a secret, they're out there. I mean, I think a couple of years ago, at one point, the board asked for the goals for the last 15 years. I mean, I've been keeping a running tally. Now, the goal that we had 15 or 16 years ago may not be relevant for next year.
Right.
Do you have it, like, at least the last few years, maybe?
I have as many years as you care to have.
Laura gave us some. Laura gave us the goals in that packet when she met with us. Because I remember, there's four of them, correct? Roughly, yeah, from last year. So if you have that folder.
And looking back at the last few years could help, like, you know, where things go. I mean, usually it's just what's currently going on in the world of the district.
It would tick off or what's still working.
I would look at least at the last two years because we had, well, all three of the goals, well, three of the goals were kind of a similar theme, right? So we had social emotional wellness, we had low marriage plan, and we had tech integration. Those two, with those three carried on for two years, so you could see how it evolved, which I think would be helpful about going on for next year.
But there's been many ideas that have floated around that never made it to a, because as many, as much as we've tried to have 15 goals.
Yeah, just somebody puts a guess.
Sometimes.
Well, I, again, I can give you as many years' worth of goals as you can. I can give them all to you, just start at the, just start at the most recent ones and work your way back as much as you, you wanna go back. And some of them are not relevant today. They were relevant 15 years ago, but they're not today, so, you know.
Maybe a couple of years.
Two, two or three years.
Yeah, yeah, fine. Welcome.
Diane, I think also it might be helpful if we look at last year's conversation, like, what got submitted, what ideas were handed over to Laura as ideas.
Did we do that through email last year?
I think we did. Yeah, just to sort of recap, like, okay, what, what was on everybody's mind last year? Not just what we picked, but what were the other things that didn't?
Yeah, I mean, last year, if I remember, last year was similar to this year where we were still building on goals from before, so.
So maybe even the year before, because I think the year before we also did the same by, you know, submitting emails to Deirdre.
And just, just to reiterate, one thing we talked about at our last meeting for, for Jacky's and Matt's context is that I feel very strongly about this, that those board goals set a context, a context for the, for the district. And we tell our teachers and our staff what the board goals are for this year. I mean, the superintendent, the building administrators, they use those goals to, to plan. So I think it's important that we put out there, this is a priority for the board in, in the year that's coming up. So I, you know, I, I, I wanna emphasize how important I think it is for the board to do that and also emphasize that, again, I'm a broken record here, but if you give the staff 15 goals, you know, they'll just glaze over. If you give them two or three or four of the board's highest priorities, they get that because they know that when the board selects the, develops and selects these goals, that I think implicit in that is that the board's gonna support those goals in terms of human resources, in terms of financial resources, again, not writing a blank check, but that, you know, if we say we wanna do this and the board says, well, no, let's, you know, we don't have the time or the money to do that, then we're gonna look back at you and say, hold it, this is one of your top priorities and you don't want us to do this now? I'm not saying that in adversarial way, but I think it sends a strong message. So I, I just, I'm sure everybody is taking it with that, with that level of seriousness. It's not just a, a throwaway.
Yeah, some goals work better than others. I mean, we hear that we, we, there was a goal about better communication between parents and teachers, and that was a message that went out multiple ways and, and I think it was successful. I mean, it was, you know, having staff, having parents talk directly with their teachers and vice versa, and just having that, opening up that communication. And, and that message, like I said, it went in many directions and that was a pretty successful goal. I mean, I think there was a lot of examples that came back of how that, that helped and how, you know, just getting, kind of hitting people over the head with that, like, you know, talk to your teacher, they're there to help you, talk to them, talk through things, you know, and that, that, that was a good goal, I think, that, that sometimes we've got that.
So will, I don't wanna commit you to anything, but will you accept input from your colleagues and just kinda keep a running list and then share it out? And especially if there's any data that we need to collect, let's try not to do it before, the day before the, the goals workshop, especially with summer vacations, you know? I may not have more computer to pull this data out if you give it to me the day before the goal workshop, but if you give it to me in a week or so, then I'll probably have enough time to pull together whatever it is we need to do, do that task.
So why don't we say maybe have everything sent to me by the 18th, not even a week, we need to hopefully have anything anybody might need? Thursday, the 18th?
And what time is the meeting on Thursday, the 25th?
Only because you guys wanted it early, it works fine.
Oh, you were gonna ask the administrators if they had any thoughts too?
Yeah, yeah. I will be by that, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
Okay, good news.
I usually go first, somebody else goes.
The obvious. Graduation was really nice.
Graduation was really nice. A difficult weathered day to call, but, you know, everybody did what they were supposed to and rallied and it was a nice ceremony as usual.
I will also piggyback on that and say that I've gotten a fair amount of positive feedback about the live streaming. And we had like 97 people watch the live stream. And that's a lot of people. So I just wanted to pass that along and that's, that's part of our NFHS system where people can live stream things that we record or film live, even if they, they don't need a subscription to that. They do for athletic events, but for non-athletic events, that, that's a freebie. And I was very encouraged that that many people live stream that, so that's, I think that's good news.
Yep, it's great.
I also got a, a, a signed card from our Senator, Senator Serino. I'm trying to congratulate Rhinebeck High School for being recognized on the list of recognition schools awarded by the New York State Department of Education. This is an incredible accomplishment. Keep up the good work as you continue to make education a priority in our community. If I can ever be of service to you, please do not hesitate to reach out to my office.
Can't keep that in your backpack, can't?
On that, on that, on that same note, although it's not good news, you know what I'm gonna say? The state last week released their list of, it wasn't just school districts, school districts, municipalities, libraries across the state that received bullet aid from their majority legislators. Of course, both houses are Democratic now and Senator Serino is Republican, so she wouldn't have any money to dole out to us, but just wanna let you know that we got a great big goose egg in terms of bullet aid.
Wasn't it this year when we met with some of our legislators and they said that we heard that this would be a good year for us to get bulleted?
Yeah, just, just telling you. Last year we got 75K, I think, from Didi and Iron and Kevin Cahill. This year we got zip. And just, if you recall, we had a conversation back when the state aid figures came out, do you remember that conversation? And some superintendents in similar school districts to us had called me to say, can you believe that's all we got in state aid? It came out to what, about 0.73% increase? And none of those schools that got the 0.73 increase got any bullet aid. Just, just saying.
So all their chips are going in the same way?
Apparently. I did my own little tally of the list and it's like, all those superintendents who were complaining to me are just venting, none of them got bullet aid.
So for Jacky and Matt, they have, once a year you can go to Albany and meet with legislators of all the schools, but we choose to personally, we go and meet with each one of our legislators.
In their districts, right here.
Right, but we go personally and, and meet with them every year and they're gracious enough to have us and listen to us, so that's something that we do, but.
And we should continue to do it.
We should continue.
Yeah, I mean, it's an opportunity for us to talk directly to them about our district and our needs and law. We try to bring solutions to them, anything that could help us, you know, laws, changes, anything that we feel like would help us.
Yeah, if they're willing to listen, I mean, it makes sense.
They're always willing to listen.
They're usually, and I say usually on purpose, they are usually very gracious when we go to meet with them. Some more so than others perhaps, but they're, they are willing to listen, but willing to listen and willing to deliver. Maybe not exactly the same yet.
You have any other good news?
The postcard is good.
Oh, yeah, I have another one. If you want me to go on and on. Our Capitol project is in full tilt right now. If you wanna tour, stop by the school, we'll get a hard hat on ya and lots of dust, messy, I mean, not, not like, you know, putting up cement block walls, not that kind of project. That today they were ripping the ceiling out of the middle school gymnasium. That today they were ripping the ceiling out of the middle school gymnasium.
Wow.
The libraries, yeah.
Maybe there should be some pictures on Twitter.
I have to get a hard hat because they won't let me in there without a, without a hard hat and it's, they're pulling stuff out of the, out of the ceiling, so.
What's his name, our project advisor? Lou, maybe Lou can do that, send some pictures.
So I just want to let you know, they did the prep work Thursday and Friday and then soon as graduation was over, they were in there Monday morning ripping stuff apart.
Awesome.
Yeah, that is good.
Awesome.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, hold business?
I don't have any.
I think maybe the NISBA conference falls under that?
Could.
Is that?
The NISBA conference is in October and we're supposed to buy this.
July fifteenth is the deadline for the early registration.
For the early registration, if anyone's going to go to that. It's in Rochester, it is October twenty, what is it, twenty-third, twenty?
Twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth.
Yes, twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth.
So it's a school board conference, they have all-day workshops you can attend. We've gone the last several years, not everyone, you know, people were able to go. Usually bring, it's a good opportunity to meet with other, other school boards. It's a great way to get ideas and see what else is going on in the state. So if you're interested in going, you're going to let Whitney know by next week, I guess, by next week.
What day is the fifteenth, maybe? It's the one, is it?
No.
Well, she needs to know before the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fourteenth is the signature.
Yeah, typically.
Call, like if you're calling for, you know, voucher tickets.
Yeah.
What? Some places there's more hotels than others, like it was Lake Placid, it was, you know, like the Hundred Games.
Last year was, was as bad as it's ever been.
Yeah, but everything was jamming on.
No, I didn't.
And you're lucky you got in a hotel.
You want to be in the hotel where the conference isn't possible.
Yes.
I mean, typically what, what we have done in prior years is, especially if it's in Rochester, which it is, so that's a, it's a bit of a schlap. Is leave like Thursday morning because stuff starts to happen by like late afternoon on Thursday. So this way you drive up there, you get settled into your hotel, stuff that starts happening Thursday night. Friday, the whole day is packed with, with great professional development for, for board members. And then Saturday morning is, is other sessions as well as the convention, which is only one person from each board is a representative on the convention floor. And then, and again, in past years, we've tried to get out of there by one o'clock or so, depending, hit the road and try to be back here by Saturday evening.
And there's usually, was it Thursday, there's a pre-law conference sometimes that morning, but at least has taken advantage of that in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's plenty to do, plenty, there's a whole floor of vendors.
Yeah, vendor, Chachki's.
Chachki's, free things, yeah.
In fact, I think in your last board packet, we had a little, I think we had a, do we have a brochure in there?
The last one, yes.
Yeah, you have.
I thought so, so, you know, take, and you guys got last, last meeting's board packet, so. There's stuff in there.
Oh, yeah.
The whole NISBA convention two thousand and eighteen, you know, they give you the whole ticket.
Yeah. So let us know before the fifteenth and if you're able to go and interested in going.
Are all the sessions known already, Whitney? All the sessions are planned out already or is that too early?
I haven't even seen this before yet.
They already have a schedule out, like at a glance, you can look at the schedule, the sessions, like are you thinking like we're, what you can sign up for?
Yeah.
I don't think you can sign up for it yet, you're like, we have to wait for registration?
But they're out though, you, I.
Oh, yeah, they have, well, they don't, they tell you who the keynote and who, what the session is.
General sessions.
Maybe the big sessions.
The actual schedule at a glance, what time things are, but like you would have to go into each thing as to who's presenting, those kind of things. So it'll give you an idea who's there, but I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Stick through it.
Yeah, that's all. All right, another opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, other? Any other?
I don't.
Okay, action items. On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
I'd like to pull six point one point twelve.
Six point one.
Twelve.
Point twelve.
That's the change word.
Oh, yeah, okay. So remove six point one point twelve from the consent agenda.
That's accepted.
Okay. Your motion to approve the consent agenda?
Similar.
Second.
All in favor? That motion passes.
I'm going to make just one comment and that's on the first item in there, just for everybody to know. The state made a change in reduced students for lunch. If you're reduced student now, was the cost, is reduced cost? There's three, it's called free and reduced and you qualify based on your income level. This year, reduced, we used to charge twenty-five cents. And this year, the state has told us that we cannot collect for reduced, so we will not be given the twenty-five cents from the kids, so everybody in this essence is free. So I do have to keep them separated though because I don't know how long this program will go. But the state says they will, they will give us that twenty-five cents. Just not for the kids. Just not for the kids, so.
So they're free and reduced and we'll get reimbursed for the reduced.
For the reduced, right, for the twenty-five cents, the students will not be paying that. The state will be paying it to us in their monthly check. Oh, it's a very good thing, yeah, it's a very good thing and I hope it encourages more people to sign up for the program. It's typically for that one, about eighty percent of our people are captured in what's called a SNAP and Medicare, Medicaid monthly download. We capture about eighty, no, probably ninety percent of the people. And probably ten to fifteen percent put applications in where they have to, we have to get their income information. I'd say that's where we, that's where we pick up our reduced. Because if you're on the SNAP and the Medicaid list, that's automatically free. So applications that are based on income that are submitted to the school district, based on that income, they're either free, reduced, or rejected because they make a bump. So that's the only way someone can get reduced is application. So, but that'll be all in a package that goes out the end of August for our family.
Aren't you doing a targeted letter as well to, to folks?
Everybody gets a letter.
Okay.
Everybody does, we don't target anybody in.
Okay.
Can't do that. But what we do is somebody falls behind, we're going through a method in which we will, getting the social workers involved to talk with the family to determine whether or not there is financial need or they just don't want to pay.
Okay, so now six point one point twelve. Motion on recommendation of superintendent schools to approve capital project change order EC dash one.
Do you want to speak to that? Yeah, I know Mark's.
Let's put the motion first.
We should, yeah.
Is that moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, so.
We'll get it.
What's, the issue with this change order is the movement of the emergency generator from, which is located on the high school basketball court, in the backside, on the left side of the building. If you look at the left side, there's a basketball court on the left side as you're looking at it in the back. Yep, no, other side of the school.
Oh, okay, by the gym.
Near and adjacent hall that's on the. You got, so over there is where the basketball court is. And the original layout had the emergency generator on the property, on the far side of the property next to a residential home. The idea then was that, that can be noisy and everything, so the idea was to move it to the other side of the basketball court.
Further away from it.
Further away from it and also closer to where the solar array is going to go for the, so. So that was discussed and we thought it was a great idea, let's move it to the other side. But one of the things at the time which wasn't discussed was the people who do that work is just not the electrician. They're just, no generator, electrician, really here to here. But site work people actually physically trench everything, lay, do the pad and do all that type of work. Problem is, is we don't have a site contractor at this time. We rejected those because they were too high. So we don't have a contractor to be able to do that work. So Tetra Tech and the Palumbo Group asked the, our architect, which is Hudson Valley Electric.
Our electrician.
Our electrician. And they put a proposal in, so they needed to subcontract out that work or do the work themselves, but I'm not sure they're going to subcontract that work. So, so when, you know, because they said, oh, it will be minimal cost, which is going to be the cost of the extra copper that has to be done. Okay, so it's an extra length of copper coming from the school, it's, it's longer, I forgot by how many feet, but more copper was needed, more trenching was needed along that line. So he said the minimal cost, okay, what we're extending, okay, minimal. But when we saw it come in around fifty-two thousand, like, wait a second, that's not minimal. And that's when they explained, well, actually it's only about an eight thousand dollar increase over what was, and that was for the copper to extend it. The actual extra like forty-three thousand or forty-four thousand is due to the subcontracting of the site work. So that site work is going to get taken out of the base bid for the site work when that's done. So when Tetra Tech and the Palumbo Group looked at it, they said, huh, that makes sense. It falls within what they had their budget parameters and that's what they expected it to cost at. So as far as they're concerned, yeah, it's a minimal increase. Well, fifty-two thousand wasn't a minimal one to me, but they're saying, expect that your site work is going to come in about forty-four thousand dollars less because that will be taken out of the base bid for that. So, so that's why it's that went from what I thought would be under ten grand up to about fifty-two grand. So that was why that was a significant increase in that cost. But another thing kind of developed that we found out within the past couple of days is emergency generator to be put in and we asked the question, so it'll be up and going in September? Well, not exactly. Is because there's another part of the electrical project, which is to consolidate the three phases that are coming in, that are in the building, consolidating to one phase. So that one phase is with the electrical generator, so everything's on that way. So the issue then was, Sheldon brought up, so in other words, if we have a power failure next year, basically it's just going to run one of the three phases. And basically he said, well, we expect we're going to try to do the consolidation throughout the year. So at some point during the year, it will become fully operational. But when and where that's going to happen is a whole different question because that work can't happen during the school day or anything of that nature because we'll probably be out without power for a while, a day, a couple of days, that type of a thing. You know, so they were thinking about doing it over the breaks, that type of a thing, maybe over an extended long weekend, that that's when they'll get in there and get that work done. But he could not guarantee that it would, would, would be done. So that was kind of one of our concerns from Sheldon and myself that kind of just came out of, oh, okay. Yeah, it kind of doesn't sound too good, yeah, emergency generator's in, but if we lose our power, it just doesn't work the first year, or partially works the first year. So that raised a little bit of concern, but Mark from the Palumbo Group did, you know, give me some assurances that it would not go all the way till next summer until this is all end operational. It did give us a pause for, wait a second. So it's, it's, the project is very complicated, these little things pop up and it's like, oh, geez, you know, like. So that does create a little bit of.
That's not related directly to the change order call.
No, 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 that had nothing to do with, nothing to do with the change order at all. And that's just a matter of the scheduling of the consolidation of the three phases of the middle school, high school.
We knew that already though.
Oh, we knew that, but we kind of thought it would kind of correspond with each other, but.
Tom, where is it getting moved to? So it was on the other side of the basketball court and where's it going now?
Like right in, right back where the music room entrance comes out.
With the trailer?
Yeah, 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 but on the grass across the parking lot.
Oh, still across the parking lot.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but there are no houses like right adjacent to where that's going to be.
They have to dig it up because they have to dig up the.
Yeah, they got to dig across the.
And they don't put it next to the school or something?
Probably.
We don't have room there, right?
Also, it's noisy, it runs once, once a day, right, or once a week? To make sure it's running and, so I don't think we want it close. We don't want it next to that person's house. And we don't really want it butting up against the school building. We want it moved as far away as we can reasonably get it without putting it down by the road and that would be ridiculous.
Very.
That's why, yeah.
So I just want to thank Tom for putting together all that information, you know, it was kind of a scary number at the beginning. And I think I was kind of unclear in my mind where the generator was, where we really thought it was going to be as opposed to where they were going to put it and then now where it was going to be moved after the change work. So I think I'm clear on that.
Yeah, so basically it's going to cost about seven thousand dollars more than what we budgeted to do that work, so.
Okay.
So every time there's a change, we'll get this, is that how it works? Do I have to what they're costing?
Yeah, yeah. See it in for the next.
Let me tell you, there's two different ways in which this can change. There is what is called allowances, and I'll get to that in a second. And then we also have this thing, which is a change order. This change order increases the contract by the amount. So the contract for Hudson Valley Electrical, they're, and I'm just going to say it was four, four hundred thousand before. Now it's four thousand, fifty-two thousand, whatever, okay? So that's one way, when I'm increasing their contract, I'm going to have to come back to you every time. Or if I'm reducing their contract, because it could be that we decide not to do something and then you come back and reduce it. But with each of the prime contracts within it is what's called an allowance. And sometimes, and some of them like Key, which has so far one of the biggest one, they got like an allowance of like seventy thousand dollars. And those monies are used to do minor type of changes where you don't need to come back to the board for it. There was.
Because it's already been approved.
Right, I, yeah, it's approved, give you an example, one of them I have here is Sheldon wanted to change the lock set in one, for the doors, and it was like three hundred dollars. We're not going to go through this whole process for three hundred dollars. So that's where we pick up these allowances. He wants a different type of closure, that was the other one, was the closures on the doors. He wanted the best you could get because that's where the doors fail. They fail on those, those crash bars. He wanted to make sure we had, on Dupre, I think it is, crash bars because they're the best.
They'll last for a long time.
So we made an allowance and we put that in because he knows if something's going to fall apart, it's going to be that crash bar. So he wants to make sure it's the best and not the middle of the road.
Okay, thanks.
So that's allowances versus a change order. Change orders, I'll come to you, allowances, there's something I have a little bit in my office.
Any other questions, Tom? All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading the modifications to board policy.
This should be a final reading.
Oh. Final reading of the modifications to board policy fifty-three hundred, district quota conflict.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I was just going to say off the record, thank you for the Oxford commas. The Oxford commas.
You're welcome, I'm not about that.
Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Patricia Heitman to the position of elementary teacher for a four-year probationary period assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September first, two thousand nineteen, and the tenure area of elementary at a salary of step one MA plus nine, sixty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-one in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Similar.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just, just to point out to the board that this is the position being vacated by. I just, just to point out to the board that this is the position being vacated by Lord Way, per the retirement notice that you approved at our last meeting.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Cheryl Lecourt as a long-term substitute in the position of teaching assistant at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective on or about September 12th, 2019, through honor about October 24th, 2019, at the pleasure of the board at regular teaching assistant substitute rate unless the appointment is required beyond 30 consecutive days, in which case it shall be compensated at the employee's final salary of step 24 BA plus five, 52,155 prorated. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Kim Snead, teaching assistant at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. On the motion of the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of fall coaches for 2019, 2020 school year, see if that's a list.
Was that something we were going to?
Well, we have to do the motions first.
So moved?
Oh, okay, second.
Do we have a motion to table?
Yes.
Second?
So moved.
Okay, we're going to table that? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the following donations and grants. A grant awarded from Teaching the Hudson Valley in support of funding for VMS grade six through eight Hudson Valley, Hudson River Valley admission and/or program cost in the amount of $1,500 submitted by Henry Fishkin at Steichen. A donation of $50 from Ginger Lewis to be applied toward defraying overdue lunch charges for free and reduced lunch students in Mrs. O'Brien's grade four class. And a donation of $900 from Ruby's Automotive Incorporated to be applied toward defraying for 2018, 2019 overdue lunch charges for the families of the financially challenged free and reduced students in the Rhinebeck Central School District.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to thank all of these people, this generous donations to our school, we always appreciate them. Thank them all. All those in favor? That motion passes. And proposing, motion to move into executive session for discussion of a particular.
Individual.
Individual.